Okay, I think we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. I am Rachel Morrie-Bidoo, Chair of the Washington County Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, and this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Carlson, Frye, and Wipps have let us know that they will not be in attendance. So, starting with Commissioner Just.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg. And Commissioner Will? I'm not seeing Commissioner Will at this time. Vice Chair Monte Blanco.
Present.
Chair Morrie-Bidoo.
Present.
All right, we have five commissioners present, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, the next item on the agenda is a Director's Report, so may we have that, please?
Thank you, Chair Morrie-Bidoo. It's been a while since we've actually had a meeting, so we've got quite a few items to catch up on. Just for way of, by way of information, on July 22nd, the Board adopted their Access and Opportunity Resolution in order, allowing the county to attest new language being seen in federal contracts and grants. Previously, the Board had issued a statement declaring that they, the adopted equity resolution would not be rescinded, revised, or amended. However, the decision was made to do so. Individuals that are interested can go to this website, HTTPS, colon, double backslash, www.washingtoncountyor.gov backslash OAO. OAO stands for Office of Access and Opportunity. And this, this action was necessary to safeguard nearly $135 million in annual federal funding so that we could continue to support our community. There is also an update about an activity that does, could potentially impact Washington County in the future. DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, had convened a rulemaking around farm stands in rural areas. And because of the controversy and concern, Governor Kotek directed the Office to pause this effort and, until some unknown date in the future. So I know there was a lot of press about this in the local, local media, and I think they've just paused for a moment, given other concerns, and not sure whether or not this will be picked up at some point in the future. But it could result in a significant level of effort on the part of Washington County to amend our regulations, to address any, any changes in rules about farm stands. We're going to be issuing a notice, request for proposal, on September 29th, seeking consultant services for an update to our active transportation elements of our transportation system plan. There's also a couple of upcoming planning events. Unfortunately, the county doesn't have the sufficient budget to send members of the Planning Commission to these events, but they may be of interest to you as individuals. The first is the IMPACT Transit and Community Conference that used, this used to be known as Railvolution, and it's a transit-oriented conference that'll be held in Portland on October 26th through 29th. There's early registration ends on September 26th. And then also, the, the State of Oregon, Oregon Planning Association, is having their annual conference in Bend this October 15th through 19th. A number of staff will be in attendance at that event, and so that is one of the reasons that we will be needing to cancel the October, is it 17th, 16th? Anyway, the second, the second meeting in October, we'll need to, to cancel, because staff will be in attendance at the conference. The county has publicly released the Rural Accessory Dwelling Units Issue Paper that was presented to you all on June 18th. Public comments were accepted for a period of 30 days through August 22nd, and those comments will inform any future ordinance writing on the rural ADUs. Most of the comments were in support of rural ADUs, some wanted them to be expanded and allowed in more areas. There were also some concerns expressed, but primarily about how short-term rentals might be regulated. And then we're working on bringing a rural ADU ordinance back to you all later this fall, and then staff will provide you more detail about those, those comments as part of that presentation. We've, moving on, we've advertised several ordinance hearings before the Planning Commission in the, in the coming months, and this will involve us meeting twice a month, and including daytime meetings, particularly coming up on October 1st and November 5th. So we wanted to make sure those are on your calendars. We also have items tentatively scheduled for November 19th and December 3rd. We've got some staffing updates. Tricia Garisco, who's with us here this evening, will be transitioning into the PC liaison role in the coming months. She's an associate planner with our community planning team, so we'd like to welcome Tricia to the group. Todd is not going anywhere, he's still staying with the county, and will be actively engaged in addressing all of those, that hefty list we have on our work plan. We also have two other planners that have joined the community planning section, and we plan on introducing them to you in person at one of our upcoming daytime meetings. The first planner, Cassie Brown, joined us on Ju-, July 30th. She's going to be focusing primarily on housing-related issues, of working with Ann Kelly, who's here this evening, and prior to joining the county, she worked as a planner for four years in Medford. And then, the second individual is Peter Grine. He started on September 2nd, and he's going to be working on a wide range of, of projects in community planning, and he comes to us from St. Louis, Missouri, where he was a planner for St. Louis County. So, items for this evening's meetings, we'll have a work session involving a training on quasi-judicial plan amendments, and then followed by that, a hearing on a quasi-judicial plan amendment. And then, a plan topics for upcoming meetings. October 1st, we've got a work session on updated county data, and a hearing on one of our ordinances, 908, on metro center boundaries. Yes, the October 15 meeting that will be canceled because of the planning conference. November 5th, there'll be a work session item on transportation system, system plan update. We'll have a hearing on an ordinance for urban planning area agreements for both, excuse me, Cornelius and Forest Grove. And then, a hearing if needed, a second hearing if needed on that ordinance on the metro center boundary. And then, November 19th, a work session on the Community Development Code Assessment Update. There's a lot of really interesting findings coming out of that. And then, if needed, a second hearing on the urban planning area agreements for Cornelius and Forest Grove. So, after some quiet months, we've got a lot on our plate. It'll be a busy fall, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The next item on our agenda is public communication. If there's anyone signed up online or in the audience who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda.
Chair, we have no one signed up, and no attendees either in the room or online who are not staff or applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on now to the work session for the quasi-judicial plan amendment training.
Good evening, Chair Morrie-Bidoo and Commissioners. I am Tricia Garisco, Associate Planner and Community Planning with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. I'll be giving you a brief overview of plan amendments. Community planning is currently processing a quasi-judicial plan amendment application, which is a type III hearing process coming before you this evening. Next slide, please. We don't have a, I don't see a, oh. Since we haven't had a quasi-judicial plan amendment in a couple of years, the last one was in 2023, we wanted to give an overview of this process and what your role will be this evening. I will discuss what plan amendments are and why they are done. We will go over two different types of plan amendments and how they are different, as well as approval criteria. Finally, some basic background information on the plan amendment for tonight. After this, Vam She will provide some information on due process and land use matters. So for the basics of plan amendments, plan amendments are any text or map changes to state-acknowledged city or county comprehensive plans. In our case, this is the 1983 County Comprehensive Plan. These amendments can affect any element of the comprehensive plan, including the Community Development Code, the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area, the Rural Natural Resource Plan, community plans, et cetera. Plan amendments can reflect changes to state law, board policy changes, or update old, outdated land use policies. They can also respond to an applicant's request to change a land use designation. Now we'll talk about the two different types of plan amendments, and then later we'll hear from County Council to go over those in more detail. There are two types of plan amendments. Legislative plan amendments may affect numerous properties where individual property owners are not the applicants. For example, all properties in a particular land use district may be affected countywide by changes allowed to uses within a district. We see this type of plan amendment more often because they're usually initiated by the county and approved through an ordinance. The decision-maker is the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Appeals can be made to Luba within 21 days after the Board decision is mailed. The one we're going to talk about tonight is a quasi-judicial plan amendment. These affect a more limited number of properties owned by the applicant and are typically a change to a land use designation that's initiated by a property owner. So when a change is requested to a rural resource, to rural resource land, such as exclusive forest conservation or exclusive farm use, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board, and the Board is ultimately the decision-maker. But for any urban plan amendment, or a plan amendment for rural, non-resource land, the PC is the decision-making body. For approval, in terms of plan amendment approval, for quasi-judicial plan amendments, the applicant must demonstrate evidence that the proposed change follows various state, regional, and local rules, including the statewide planning goals, the transportation planning rule, the metro-urban growth management functional plan, and the various elements of the County Comprehensive Plan. The applicability of these vary, depending on the nature of the proposed change and whether it is urban or rural. So staff reviews the application for compliance with all of these, writes a staff report with the findings, and provides the staff report to the Planning Commission. When necessary, we would present to the Board of County Commissioners as well. The upcoming hearing this evening is a proposed amendment for a site on West Baseline Road. The current land use designation is transit-oriented business and is currently undeveloped and vacant. You can see it here in the very center of that figure. The proposed change would be to industrial, similar to the properties immediately to the east and west of the site. The Planning Commission will be the decision-maker for this request. Now I will hand it over to County Council to talk about due process and land use matters.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to just touch a little bit on due process, specifically in the context of a quasi-judicial plan amendment hearing. Due process, specifically procedural due process, asks the question, has the government followed the proper procedures before it deprived someone of life, liberty, or property? The focus is on the fairness of the government's process, which is even more critical in this type of hearing where you serve as the decision-makers. Fairness means that individuals receive notice of the government action and an opportunity to be heard, in this case, in a hearing where they can present evidence and examine witnesses, where there is an accurate record of the proceedings and adequate written findings. Fairness also means that individuals are entitled to an impartial decision-maker free from bias, including conflicts of interest. As such, Commissioners should not have any ex parte contact related to the issues at bar, meaning no contact with an individual party regarding the substance of the matter before you. Any communications regarding this matter should, should happen here in the presence of both parties and their representatives and your fellow Commissioners. As a reminder, if you have an actual conflict of interest, you may not participate in this proceeding. If you have a potential conflict of interest, you must declare it on the record before the proceedings begin. To that end, before the hearing commences, I will ask each of you to disclose on the record any ex parte contacts, bias towards the parties or issues, or conflicts of interest related to the case at bar. Do you have any questions about due process in this context? For the record, no hands are raised. Do you have any questions about anything that we discussed so far?
Do Commissioners have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So this will bring us to the next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing for the quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial plan amendment, case file number 25-160-PA. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Ready, I believe. Is that right?
Thank you, Chair Morrie-Bidoo. Good evening, everyone. Today's hearing before the Planning Commission is for a plan amendment to change the land use designation of a 0.36 acre lot from transit-oriented business, or TO, colon, BUS, to industrial, or IND, consistent with the designation of bordering properties to the east and west. Today, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of how this particular hearing will proceed, and then I will pass it over to Chair Morrie-Bidoo. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. First, staff will present a summary of the applicable criteria and the staff report, including a staff recommendation. Planning Commission members may then ask clarifying questions. The Chair will then commence the hearing if there are no questions. Second, the applicant or applicant's representative may provide information by way of testimony, a presentation, or both if they so choose. There is a 10-minute time limit on this part of the hearing. Testimony will then be taken from those in favor of the proposal. There is a five-minute time limit per person, 10 minutes for a citizen participation organization or CPO. After that, testimony will be taken from those opposed to the proposal, and again, there's a five-minute time limit per person or 10 minutes for a CPO. Finally, testimony will be taken from any persons who are neutral to the proposal with the same time limits that I just discussed. Finally, the applicant or applicant's representative will have the opportunity to offer rebuttal information or testimony if they so desire. There's a five-minute time limit for the rebuttal. Anyone appearing remotely who wishes to testify regarding this plan amendment and who has not notified the staff in advance will raise their virtual hand when the clerk of the Planning Commission asks who will testify in favor, in opposition, or as neutral. Once called upon to testify, each person should state their name and address, after which the clerk will ask them to take an oath or affirmation as to the truthfulness of their testimony. Afterwards, the person may begin their testimony. Persons may also submit written testimony to the clerk. The testimony can be emailed to LUT Planning Commission, all one word, at washingtoncountyor.gov. The deadline to submit written testimony on this plan amendment that we're hearing tonight is at the close of the public hearing, so today, unless the Planning Commission agrees to a later deadline. Prior to the end of the public hearing, a participant in this hearing may request a continuance to submit additional testimony, evidence, or argument, and request that the record remain open for at least seven days. Likewise, prior to the close of this hearing, the Chair will ask the clerk if any additional written testimony has been received. After the close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission may deliberate and vote on this plan amendment request. No additional testimony will be received after the public hearing is closed, except as I just described. All testimony, arguments, and evidence should only be directed towards the criteria included in the staff report, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person providing the testimony believes to apply to the decision on this plan amendment. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the Planning Commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude the ability to make an appeal based on that issue. Further, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, or other issues, with sufficient specificity to allow Washington County to respond to the issue may preclude their ability to file a lawsuit for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, Planning Commissioner members should disclose any ex parte contacts, bias towards the parties or issues, or conflicts of interest related to the matter at issue. Please raise your hand if you wish to make a disclosure. For the record, I note that no hands are raised. The Chair may now request a summary of the staff report. Thank you, Chair Morrie-Bidoo.
Thank you. Staff may now present the staff report for this plan amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. My name is Tricia Garisco, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation, for the record. This is a comprehensive plan amendment proposing to change the land use designation of a property from transit-oriented business to industrial. As I go through this presentation, I will first discuss the proposal. We'll look at the site, and the vicinity, some key criteria, and findings of compliance, and then the staff's recommendation. Northwest Engineers LLC is representing the applicant, CWB Properties LLC. The applicant is requesting a change from transit-oriented business to industrial. For some history of the site, here we see the Heritage Village final subdivision plat from the 1970s. Parcel A, you can see it at the bottom, it was highlighted in yellow, but it didn't show up too well, but the lot, for the subject property, is parcel A. The railway line is to the north of the site, and north of the railway line is Heritage Village subdivision. An Oregon electric railway line, which operated from 1908 to 1994, predated the MAX line that now divides parcel A from lands to the north. The site was previously assigned residential six, R6, and the lots to the east and the west were assigned industrial. In 1997, a engrossed ordinance, number 485, applied transit-oriented land use district designation to this lot and its neighbors to the east and the west. A plan amendment in 2002 returned eight adjoining lots to industrial, but not this site due to uncertainties surrounding potential use as subdivision access. However, the railway limited this potential, and with the construction of a wall, the site remains vacant as a transit-oriented business property. The plat does not list any special restrictions for the site. So the site here, you can see it from the perspective of the road, it's a transit-oriented business site, it's point, 0.36 acres, and it's undeveloped. The properties to the east and west are industrial, and they are developed. This site has about 100 feet of frontage on West Baseline Road, which is a five-lane arterial. Nearest crosswalks are a half a mile to the east and a quarter of a mile to the west. It is greater than a half a mile to the nearest transit station, and it is greater than a fourth of a mile to the nearest bus stop. Please note that there are light rail tracks and a wall to the north. So this is facing north. The site is within the Sunset West Community Plan and the El Monica subarea. Please note the frontage along Southwest Baseline Road, which is a five-lane arterial, and please note the adjacent sites that are industrial, and the MAX line to the north. To the north is also Heritage Village subdivision, and to the south, we have transit-oriented business on the left. In the middle, we have Beaverton property, station community housing and mixed use. It was the Panzer Nursery. And to the southeast, we have more unincorporated properties. The key criteria considered in this presentation relate to citizen involvement, land use planning, housing, transportation, and other public facilities and services. We applied several sources to determine if this proposal meets the criteria. The sources that we used are the state, statewide planning goals and transportation planning rule, metro-urban growth management functional plan, and for Washington County, Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area, or the CFP, the transportation system plan, or the TSP, the Sunset West Community Plan, and the Community Development Code, or the CDC. To address citizen involvement, the county provided notice to invite public involvement within the Oregonian newspaper and to necessary parties, including metro, CPO 7, and property owners within 500 feet of the site. The comment period and the Planning Commission hearing provide opportunity for public testimony. Staff finds that this proposal has been compliant with the requirements. Now we will highlight the ways in which the plan amendment is compliant with certain elements of the Community Development Code, the Comprehensive Framework Plan, the statewide planning goals, the metro functional plan, and the Sunset West Community Plan. This proposal has determined that the site is consistent with CDC Section 320, meeting the purpose and intent for areas in the industrial district. Recognition of existing industrial sites immediately east and west support designating this site as industrial. In addition, this plan amendment finds that the site is not consistent with the current designation of CDC Section 375, or Transit-Oriented Business Purpose and Intent. Transit-oriented districts are intended to encourage development that is transit-oriented business. Transit-oriented districts are intended to encourage development that is transit-supportive, pedestrian-oriented, and areas within 0.5 miles of light rail transit stations are no more than a quarter of a mile from bus service and are in town centers or regional centers. However, this site is at a distance, bless you, this site is at a distance greater than those mentioned, and the location lacks direct pedestrian connections to areas to the south. It is also physically cut off from residential areas to the north by the transit tracks and the concrete wall, so the site is neither transit-supportive nor pedestrian-oriented. The plan amendment is in compliance with Policy Number One of the Comprehensive Framework Plan, which recognizes that there has been a major change in circumstances that has affected the character of the area, including land use changes to the adjacent properties from prior plan amendments. With the eight properties that were assigned industrial in 2002, that plan amendment has left this one relatively small property as transit-oriented business. And with the distance from transit and connectivity issues, transit-oriented business is no longer an appropriate designation for this subject property. Staff finds that this plan amendment is in compliance with statewide planning goals 2, 9, and 14, addressing land use planning, economic development, and urbanization. A site designation as industrial would unite a divided string of industrial sites, encouraging efficient use of land and fostering local economic contributions. As the site is physically separated from residential areas by the arterial to the south and the wall and the rail line to the north, the site is relatively small, 0.36 acres, and the neighbors to the east and the west are industrial. This plan amendment does not appear to create conflict with the Metro Functional Plan Title A change to industrial would be compliant with the Sunset West Community Plan, noting intentions for industrial uses in areas adjacent to the MAX line, and it would support economic development. Community design specifications mention a vision of balanced community with significant land planned for industrial uses, and it also considers future economic development. Finally, looking at Comprehensive Framework Plan Policies 18 and 20 that address plan designations and local criteria for locational criteria for development and urban area economy, the site is inconsistent with transit-oriented district specifications and is more consistent with criteria for the industrial designation due to the connectivity issues like the distance from the bus stops and the transit stations and its adjacency to other industrial land use properties. A change from transit-oriented business to industrial will support the trend of industrial uses in this immediate vicinity, likely the most feasible and logical approach to onsite development. If designated as industrial, the site would then be consistent with the adjacent lots and together with neighboring properties may provide greater flexibility for future Elements of housing were addressed by applying Goal 10, Metro Housing Rule, and Comprehensive Framework Plan Policies to this plan amendment. The proposal meets the criteria as the existing land use designation does not require residential use, and the site is not conducive to a housing development due to the unique features of this site: small size, adjacent to industrial, physical constraints of the wall to the north, the light rail to the north, and the arterial to the south, has poor residential connection to the north and the south, has poor pedestrian and transit connections, and poor connectivity to other residential. This proposal meets Goal 12 and the transportation planning rule. The transportation staff has determined that a change would not have significant impacts on traffic or transportation facilities, and determined that there would be a reduction in trips for an industrial use as compared to the current transit-oriented business designation For other facilities and services, TVFNR, or Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, THPRD, Tuolton Valley Water District, Clean Water Services, the Washington County Sheriff, and the Beaverton County School District, I'm sorry, the Beaverton School District, have confirmed that adequate services can be provided under this change. THPRD has indicated that the area is below the level of service threshold, but the site is in an area that THPRD does not consider served and does not have plans to add service capacity in this area. Please note that parks are considered desirable as compared with critical or essential services. We have not received any letters at this time regarding the proposal. Based on the criteria and the findings in the submitted application, the staff report, the attachments, staff believes industrial is a more appropriate designation for this site than transit-oriented business. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing and approve this
Thank you very much. Do Planning Commission members have any clarifying questions? Commissioner Peterson?
I think it was on Slide 14, there was the mention of reduced trips. I'm curious what that was in regards to...
Sure, so...
14 or 13?
Yeah, let me go back.
One more back.
One more, okay. So our transportation staff, they run a worst-case scenario based on trips during the day and in the evening, based on the types of uses that are allowed, and the current land use designation versus an industrial land use, and they ran those numbers, and they concluded that if it were to change to industrial, that the site would actually have fewer trips generated.
Like residents commuting, or would you...
Just general use.
Two and from the site.
Yeah, two and from the site.
From the site, oh, okay.
For the purposes of any uses that could be occurring.
Switching it away from transit-oriented business would...
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Forgive me if I missed it, but is there a map that shows the location of this site within the county, not just the close-up on baseline?
Right. We do not have it here. We have it as part of, I can provide you with that. It's in our report. Oh, the notice, let me see.
So that is included in your packet as the first, it's the notice of public hearing? It's in there where...
Yeah, I just wanted it to be part of today's testimony as something that folks who are viewing online could, you know, see for the record.
For, thank you.
Are there any other questions from Planning Commissioners? Okay, at this time, we will now open the public hearing. I would like to ask if the applicant or applicant's representative would like to testify, and if so, they will be sworn in as indicated by County Council. The applicant and applicant's representative will have up to 10 minutes.
For the record, the applicant had indicated to staff that they did not need to testify unless there were other people that were going to testify and then they would want to make a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask for testimony from members of the public. Clerk of the Planning Commission, will you please call on people to testify in the order indicated by County Council, if any?
Thank you. We have no one signed up to testify, and I'm not seeing anyone online.
Ms. Vomche, do I continue with asking the other, the other sections of testimony, or can I close the public hearing?
Chair Baddoo, Maury Baddoo, I think you can close the hearing since there is no one in person or virtually signed up to testify.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Now that the public hearing is closed, we'll move on to Planning Commission deliberations. Would any Planning Commissioners like to begin the deliberations? Well, I will say thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and thorough. Appreciate it. So at this time, I would like to welcome a motion on this application.
I move to approve, I move approval of the application.
Is there a second? Clerk Brown, maybe please have a vote.
Yes. Commissioner Just? Commissioner Peterson? Commissioner Rosenberg? Vice Chair Monte Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Maury Baddoo?
Aye.
And I should check with County Council, should I be calling the Commissioners who we know are absent?
I don't think that's necessary.
Thank you. We have, we have five ayes, and the motion passes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes for July 16, 2025. Do Commissioners have any comments or questions? Seeing none and without objection, the minutes for July 16, 2025 are accepted as submitted. Next item on the agenda is Planning Commission announcements. Do Commissioners have anything they would like to share at this time? Seeing nothing, next item on the agenda is adjournment, so without objection, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.